Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Corangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu, Mr. Sizmar, Mrs. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker. I mean President Lax, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's not a bad person to be confused with. Here, and we do have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting of Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News in Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. What an exciting night. We are going to get a little bit of board business out of the way before we get to the good stuff. So, Dr. Valesky, would you like to give us some fun things in your superintendent's report before we get on?
Absolutely, President Lax. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. On Friday, April 29th, the seniors celebrated finalizing their post-secondary plans during the annual Decision Day event hosted by the High School Counseling Department. The event was sponsored by PTSA. Seniors were encouraged to wear clothing to represent their plans after high school and to pin where they are going to mark their mark or make their mark on Decision Day. Games prizes and a photo booth were also available. This was an exciting and well-attended celebration for all the senior class. Congratulations to our April High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and of course for modeling exceptional character. The Visual Arts Department is hosting their second annual outdoor spring art walk beginning Friday, May 13th through Monday, June 13th at the municipal complex. There will be approximately 320 pieces of student artwork on display, and this was once again funded by the EBF through a grant. I would like to remind the community that since we have not used all of our emergency closing days this school year, Friday, May 27th will become a non-school day for students and non-work day for 10-month staff. Additionally, Friday, June 3rd will become a single session for all students and all staff with lunch served in grades K through 7. Thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff. If the board members would like to join me down in the audience.
So, hi, it's me again. It is my honor to welcome you tonight to this special event in person to our staff award ceremony for actually 2020, 2021, and 2022. And we are here to recognize and applaud our teacher and support staff award winners as well as the staff members who have served our district for 25 years. Their dedication and commitment to our students and the district is recognized and truly appreciated. And a very special thank you to the family members here tonight. I'm sure you've been a major contributor to the success and accomplishments of these individuals, and you've made your own sacrifices all along the way in support of their careers. It is now my pleasure to introduce our board president, Mrs. Lori Lax, who will make a few words.
A very few, that's the good news. So few, I didn't even write them down. This is so exciting because I can't believe we've had to wait a few years. And for those folks from 2020, long overdue. The fact is, even though we're doing this three years or two years late, you guys have still done such amazing things. So, all of the good things in the building has continued. It's about time that we get to recognize you, so I am not going to speak because I want to get to Danny to applaud for each and every one of you and for some of the people that have been here for such a long time. Each year when that list grows, it gets really exciting. Although unfortunately for me, now I'm getting to the point where the staff that were here and taught when I was in school are no longer there. So, it's a little disappointing because I'm a little old. But I just want to wish everybody well, to yourselves, to your families. Thank you. We couldn't do anything without you guys, so go Danny.
Thanks, Lori. I'd like to introduce Dr. Dana Zimbicki, who is president of the East Brunswick Education Association. But this year, her title actually got longer because she is now Councilwoman Zimbicki. So, Dr. Zimbicki?
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations. Each year in May, appropriately this week during Staff and Teacher Appreciation Week, we get to honor 11 educators and 13 ESPs. However, this year, tonight and once again a week from now, we will be honoring, as we look in the rearview mirror hopefully of COVID, 33 educators and 39 support staff and also 14 of our staff that have earned 25, or maybe now 25-plus, years of service. That is just spectacular. So, every year when I do this speech, I try to look for something for inspiration, and this year, my inspiration is going to come from my favorite flower, the sunflower. You see, the sunflower symbolizes adoration, loyalty, and longevity. You are all the sunflowers. It's appropriate, right? Many of our colleagues, parents, and community members and students have such deep adoration for you and all you do for our district. You are loyal to a fault, to our district, going above and beyond and often putting yourself last, especially over these past three years. And longevity, congratulations to our honorees celebrating 25, 25-plus years of service to our district. We truly value you. You see, sunflowers, no matter how small or how little light is available, they always seek out the sunlight and hold their heads high in adoration of the sun. When it's cloudy, the sunflowers turn, and instead of gathering their energy from the sun, they turn to each other and they gather their energy from each other. So, each of you, our sunflowers, have held your heads high and have reached for the light. But in our darkest days, you faced each other and you became the light for each other and all of our other staff members and students in the district. So, I want to thank you for all you do for being the light in our district. And I thought this was an interesting fact. Did you know that the sunflower is actually made up of hundreds of tiny flowers? I thought that was kind of appropriate. Thinking about hundreds of students that have become part of you as you have had a profound influence on so many. You all make a difference in such a unique way, and that's why you're being honored tonight. And from the bottom of my heart, thanks to all of you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Zimbicki. And next to say a few words is Mr. Andy Scanlon. He's president of the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association. Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. It's always interesting to see, you know, people clap before somebody actually comes on. It's like, you know, you haven't delivered yet, but and. And Dana, you know, that was not just a metaphor, but also in one of our engineering classes, they're working on sustainability, and one of the things that they're growing are sunflowers. And they really are striving and they're probably about four feet long, looking for a sun inside of a classroom. So, it is for real. And it's interesting, too, that, you know, it's been two years since we've been here. And I would say, you know, welcome back, but that's kind of like saying, you know, Happy New Year to someone in February. So, the main thing here really is that it is, we are sitting with an amazing group of honorees here. The dedication that they've put in, whether it's the longevity, the 25 years, or just being at the top of their craft and working with every student to make sure that they are successful in whatever they are doing. These are the people who are able to do it. These are the people who are our role models. So, from the Principals and Supervisors Association, we would like to say thank you and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. And for those of you who thought that I was going to be doing anything beyond these words, you were wrong. I'd like to introduce who the master of the ceremonies will be for tonight, and that is Ms. Danielle Ruggiero. She is not only our Director of Human Resources, she puts a lot of time and effort into the creation and orchestration of this event. And this year has been extremely difficult in making sure that our honorees were given this moment as respect for all of the things that they have given to East Brunswick. So, and Danny is also not just a director in the Central Office Department. She's also the administrator most likely to have a personal conversation with any of you. And she knows you by name. So, without further ado, Danny.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. This is my most favorite night, and I have been waiting for two long years to be here. And I'm so happy we're here in person. And I'm so appreciative to the retirees who've come back to let us honor you appropriately and also to the families for joining us. We are thrilled. We are grateful to be here to honor our 2020, 2021, and 2022 staff award winners and years of service recipients for Bowman Row, Central, Chittick, Frost, Irwin, and Lawrence Brook Schools. And I'm so proud of our principals who are here and have worked so hard to craft speeches to honor the amazing people that we have here tonight as they bring their incredible work to life. So, each of you are so critical to us and what we do here. And I can't wait for your friends and family to hear what your principals have to say about you. So, we're going to begin with Bowman Row.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Gristina, and I am the proud acting principal of Bowman Row Elementary School, here to introduce you to six amazing members of the Bowman Row family. First, math specialist Linda Bortnick, our 2020 Teacher of the Year. Linda came to East Brunswick as a sixth-grade math teacher and quickly demonstrated her leadership capabilities. She has spent the past six years supporting the mathematical growth of students and teachers. Believe me, Linda truly lives for math. Some of her greatest contributions are supervising the math club and adding math tips to elementary school newsletters. Teachers always look to her for support and feedback as they continue to develop their own craft, and we are so fortunate to have had her. Always thinking outside of the box for the betterment of student learning, Linda worked to implement positive behavioral supports in schools programming at Bowman Row. And although we lost her to Chittick School, we are still so proud to celebrate her as Bowman Row's 2020 Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Linda. There are not too many people who have the bragging rights of Bowman Row's first Support Staff winner. Meet Noreen Turley, who began her career in East Brunswick as a special educator. After many years of highly effective teaching in our district, Noreen transitioned to school counselor at Hammershold, from which she retired in 2011. After being home for a few years, I think Noreen missed us, as we were fortunate to get her to return as an instructional assistant, employing her incredible background in this new role. Put simply, Noreen is a superstar. Every teacher wanted her in their classroom. When she left us for a second time in 2020 to really retire, hearts were broken. We missed our champion for students who led the faculty basketball team to many victories over our fifth graders. Noreen has happily retired and relocated, but we didn't want to miss the chance to congratulate her on being Bowman Row's 2020 Support Staff winner. Alyssa Di Tomaso is our 2021 Teacher of the Year. After beginning her career in New York, Alyssa and her family relocated to New Jersey, and she started her seven-year career in East Brunswick. Alyssa is always willing to step in and do whatever is asked of her. A prime example is how she has tackled both the position of media specialist and special education teacher with incredible skill. Alyssa is Bowman Row's resident technology guru. She is a Level 1 certified Google educator, a Microsoft certified educator, Flipgrid certified, and a Class Dojo mentor. Alyssa engages all students through her motivating STEM activities, many of which she has funded through grants from the East Brunswick Education Foundation. As a teacher leader, Alyssa provides support for colleagues in special education programs and is a member of the School Improvement Panel. Bowman Row is so lucky to have her. Congratulations, Alyssa Di Tomaso. Undoubtedly, 2021 brought new challenges for all of us, but Bowman Row's Support Staff winner helped us navigate our way through. Head custodian Cedric Johnson, with his quiet, reassuring ways, worked endlessly to keep our school clean and keep our team calm at the onset of the pandemic. Regardless of the needs, Cedric was always willing to do whatever was asked of him while maintaining a positive outlook and attitude. Not only does Cedric maintain the building, but he also creates and maintains trusting relationships with our students, families, and staff. Cedric is the epitome of a hard worker demonstrating responsibility, reliability, and flexibility each day. The Bowman Row community congratulates and thanks our 2021 Support Staff winner, Cedric Johnson. We could not live without him. I am so proud to showcase the work of Bowman Row's Teacher of the Year for 2022, reading specialist Amy Vedansky. Amy is a passionate educator who has a strong bond with her students and colleagues. Students love working with Mrs. V because she makes reading fun and accessible for all learners. Amy has an extensive knowledge of best practices for young readers. When teachers are looking for books, looking for guidance with lessons, or looking for new ways to motivate their readers, they turn to Amy for help, and she always delivers. In addition, Amy collaborates with our staff to develop literacy-based events that encourage a love of reading. She plans our annual Read Across America festivities, and she has developed and delivered family workshops as well. Amy is also the co-advisor of the Bowman Row Drama Club. Furthermore, Amy is trusted and respected not only by her bound colleagues but also by her fellow reading specialists. I know this firsthand because I am lucky enough to have worked with her and learned so much from her. Congratulations to the 2022 Bowman Row Teacher of the Year, Amy Vedansky. A very talented instructional assistant Vivian Tadros is Bowman Row's Support Staff winner for 2022. Not many people know that Vivian has a degree in biochemistry and actually holds a teaching certificate, which is really no surprise considering her talents and her intuitiveness in working with our students. Vivian is warm, calm, and friendly. Her positivity is magical, which makes working with her each day a joy for students and staff. Vivian is a trustworthy and reliable assistant, which is why teachers love having her in their classrooms. In addition, Vivian is a champion for all things Bowman Row. She has become a part of the heart of our school with her enthusiasm for handling social committee events. We are extremely lucky and grateful that she is all ours. The 2022 Support Staff of the Year recipient, Vivian Tadros.
Good evening. My name is Tom Husar, and I am the very proud principal of Central Elementary School. And it is my great honor to introduce you to six amazing individuals this evening. First, from 2020, our Teacher of the Year, Jody Crowell. So, the first person who recognized Jody's wonderful impact on children was my son Tyler, who was five at the time, five, and attending morning care at Lawrence Brook Elementary School. When he came home, he always had a story about how Mrs. Crowell was always doing something that made everyone feel special. During those morning drop-offs, I was lucky enough to get to know Jody a bit and never imagined by the time my son Tyler turned 15 that I would be fortunate enough to become her principal. Jody deserves recognition for many, many reasons. It's not just because she is a wonderful advocate or because she will do anything to have a positive impact on a child's life. It is the many things that Jody does that she does not seek recognition for that make her so special. Quite literally, Jody does everything for the kids. In nominating her, one colleague stated, "We are lucky to have many outstanding teachers here at Central, but there is no one who combines talent with drive and compassion more than Jody Crowell." While I have only worked with Jody for eight months, she began having an impact on my son 10 years ago, and it is my distinct pleasure to watch her continue to do that every day for our students at Central Elementary. Jody, congratulations. Our 2020 Support Staff winner, Mrs. Kelly Esposito. Every great school has at least one person who always knows exactly what to say and when someone really needs to hear it. Whether it's a student who comes to the office to deliver the day's attendance but seems sad and hopes that someone might notice. Or it is a new substitute that has no idea how to find their classroom for the day. Or it's the new principal who needs a word of encouragement from time to time. Kelly Esposito has this knack for knowing what people really need in the moment with them ever saying a word to her. While the teachers and principal of an elementary school most often get to be the face of the school, it is the front office secretary who truly is the voice of the school. When the parent of a newly enrolled student nervously called to ensure that their child safely got on the bus at the end of their first day, they didn't speak to me. Instead, it was Mrs. Esposito's calm voice that would soothe their concerns. An advisor, a counselor, and a dedicated secretary. It is my great honor to recognize Mrs. Kelly Esposito, our Support Staff winner for 2020. Our 2021 Teacher of the Year winner, Mrs. Sarah Ennis. You know someone's incredibly valuable when you cringe if they're absent. Sarah Ennis is that person. She really is that important to the success of our building, in very large part because Sarah is everywhere. At least five times every day, I ask, "Have you seen Sarah?" Finding her is a daunting task because she might be in a classroom teaching a health lesson. She might be leading a mindfulness group with students who need her skill now more than ever. She might be out on the playground to make sure that every student has someone to play with. Quite often, the most valuable player on any sports team is not the one who does the one thing the best. Rather, it is the person who can do just about everything really well. That is Sarah. She is a teacher, a counselor, a guide to parents, the person most likely to say, "I'll do it," when help is needed. I am supremely confident that I speak on behalf of the entire Central team and our parents in saying how invaluable Sarah Ennis is to our building and our community. Congratulations, Sarah. Our Support Staff winner for 2021 is Amy Wasserman. By the time I arrived at Central, our 2021 Support Staff winner, Amy Wasserman, had moved on to another building. But you have to be pretty great and deserving of this award if everyone in the building has a story to tell about you. It did not take long to realize how deserving Amy was in receiving this honor. All I heard was, "Wait, you don't know Amy Wasserman?" Let me tell you about Amy Wasserman. There is no doubt that Amy's impact was and continues to be very significant. One colleague noted, "I could honestly say that our students enjoy coming to school to see Mrs. Wasserman." Another colleague stated, "Mrs. Wasserman cares about the well-being of each child in our classroom. She will be the first to let me know when someone has not eaten much for lunch. She serves as my eyes and ears whenever the students are not with me." Many times, Miss Wasserman will resolve issues, academic and social, before she returns to our classroom. I know the children are in good hands when they are with her. In speaking with many people, the words I heard most often about Miss Wasserman were, "Kind, dedicated, persistent, and indispensable." The takeaway phrase was, "There was nothing more important to Amy than the development of the children that she was working with. It was like they were her own children." Amy has retired and relocated, but it is truly my honor to recognize her as Central Schools Support Staff winner for 2021. Central's Teacher of the Year for 2022 is Lisa Carney. Not one day goes by that I don't hear over the walkie, "Mrs. Carney, I'm sending a student in to see you." No, recess is not Lisa's favorite time of the day. That said, what time of day is ideal? A nurse has no set lunch or prep time. A nurse is literally always on call, and this nurse is all about the kids. In her nomination, a colleague wrote, "Students love Lisa. They feel welcome in her office and are comfortable coming to see her for just about anything. She has taught the students to independently help themselves when possible by creating a self-help station with bandages, Vaseline, Q-tips, and much more." Lisa was selected by our committee because of her selfless dedication to our staff and students on a daily basis. In fact, when our Educator of the Year Committee met to review nominations, I clearly remember one member saying, "I sincerely hope that Lisa knows that her nomination had far less to do with her being a COVID first responder, but it's really about her dedication on a daily basis." Such dedication that at 10 o'clock one Friday night in November that I remember very well, I was at a wedding in Chicago, and there's nothing that I dread more than the dance floor. I'm this awful, awful dancer. And sure enough, I'm sitting there milking my. And sure enough, I'm sitting there milking my cake, and at 10 o'clock, my phone goes off, and it's Mrs. Carney to tell me that, "Tom, we've got to do some contact tracing." It was 10 o'clock at night on a Friday. Her dedication knows no bounds. Her dedication to our students and staff literally knows no end of the workday. It is my great honor to award the incomparable Mrs. Lisa Carney as Central's Educator of Our 2022 Support Staff winner, Mrs. Michelle Shamim. I challenge you to find someone who enjoys their job more than instructional assistant Michelle Shamim. Her strong work ethic and dedication to our students is evident daily. As a top-notch professional, she is quick to learn and effectively implements new behavior plans and instructional strategies with a child-centered approach. In nominating Mrs. Shamim, a colleague wrote, "After learning about a child's special interest in dinosaurs, Mrs. Shamim brought in as many dinosaur books and puzzles as she could find. Her sweet and calm demeanor made it easy for her to form a special bond with the students, and she became the trusted adult that that child needed." Thanks to Mrs. Shamim's tireless dedication and knowledge of positive behavior management strategies, countless students at Central have shown a tremendous amount of growth. Although at tonight's dinner, I did find out that Mrs. Shamim is a big Pittsburgh Penguins fan, and as a Rangers fan, I was a little disappointed, but I am still very honored to be the principal of our Support Staff winner of the year for 2022, Mrs. Michelle Shamim. Congratulations, Michelle.
My name is Christine Shay, and I have been the principal of Chittick Elementary School for the past two years, honored to work side by side with an incredibly talented and dedicated staff. When I speak of talent and dedication, our 2020 Teacher of the Year recipient is no exception. Jane Garvin is a consummate educator and professional. She is well-versed in curriculum and instructional strategies, always looking for ways to improve her practice. Additionally, Jane invests her time in connecting with her students on all levels, assuring that each of their social, emotional, and academic needs are met. She is determined to give them the tools they need to be successful in school and in life. Jane is an eager collaborator, both with her students and with all of the Chittick staff. Pass by Jane's class any day of the week, and you will hear her mantra, "Teamwork makes the dream work." Jane Garvin makes the dream work every day at Chittick. On her behalf, I would like to accept this great, well-deserved honor. Chittick Schools' 2020 Support Staff winner has a background in designing and marketing, but when you see her in action, you will know she was destined to work in education. That was a quote from the people that nominated Bronwyn Shaughnessy for this award. I never met her until the end of last year, and then we got reacquainted at our dinner, and I can absolutely say that Bronwyn is exceptional. Instructional assistant Bronwyn Shaughnessy is described by her colleagues as "the most patient and hard-working individual, always willing to go above and beyond." Bronwyn lights up when she is around children. In the words of her teacher partners, "Bronwyn is a pleasure to work with and brings such a warm presence in the classroom." Bronwyn was nominated for this award by members of Chittick Student Council. She went above and beyond to support the club, and the students wanted her to know how much they appreciated her generous contributions to their projects. Congratulations to Chittick Schools' 2020 Support Staff winner, Bronwyn Shaughnessy. We affectionately call her Beth. In the words of her colleagues, "Beth never settles for her students. For example, in the summer of 2021, Beth kept in daily phone contact to support and care for a student who lost family members due to COVID-19. She assisted the family in organizing a fund drive for funeral costs and food needs. As the 2021 school year began, she dropped off materials to children who otherwise might not have had the ability to pick them up. Whether in the classroom or at home, Beth is unstoppable in her advocacy for her students. As a peer, Beth provides consistent encouragement to her coworkers and is always interested in learning new technologies or a technique for assisting her students. She readily and graciously offers suggestions to fellow teachers for ways to best serve students. There is no teacher who is more frequently communicated with families than Ms. Connors. In fact, her relationship with parents is so widely known that teachers often reach out to her in order to discuss a student's needs because they know she will quickly address the issue with the student and the parent. To directly quote her colleagues, "Beth is a bright light in this dark and difficult time and is wholly worthy of the distinction Teacher of the Year." Webster's Dictionary defines the role of secretary as "a person employed to handle correspondence, keep files, and do clerical work." I can tell you, there is so much more to it than that. If you knew Chittick Schools' Support Staff winner for 2021, Main Office Secretary Lucy Reed, you would agree with me. Hard-working, diligent, wonderful asset to our school community, these are the words and phrases used to describe Mrs. Reed. Lucy welcomes staff and students into our building with a radiant smile on her face. She works swiftly to distribute instructional supplies to students and staff members to maximize student learning. Lucy demonstrates professionalism when speaking to families and the community, always going the extra mile to assure that children and their families are well taken care of. During hybrid instruction, Lucy knew exactly who was meant to be in school and who was meant to be receiving virtual instruction. Nothing escapes her notice. During a year of challenges, Lucy maintains her cheerful personality, which many describe as infectious. In an uncertain and often stressful time, it was the kind of infectious thing we all needed. Chittick School is proud to call Mrs. Reed our Support Staff Award winner for 2021. Unfortunately, she had an emergency at home and can't be here tonight, but I would like to say, "Congratulations, Lucy," and I will read this to you over and over again tomorrow. This year's Teacher of the Year recipient is none other than Mr. Carlos Garcia. A teacher and positive male role model, Carlos is a vital member of the Chittick team and a strong thread in the fabric of our school. Carlos's demeanor, professionalism, and dedication to his students, their families, and his colleagues make him an invaluable asset. If you curated every positive adjective to describe an educator and could create a picture from it, that picture would be Carlos. The students that Carlos and his team instruct appreciate his varying degrees and types of supports in all areas. Watching him seamlessly and flexibly alter his instructional strategies and management techniques is akin to watching a ballet. His demeanor is calm; his connection to students is undeniable. Mr. Garcia was nominated by several people for this award, many of them the staff of instructional assistants that work alongside him. They collectively acknowledge that Carlos is a consummate educator and a colleague who always takes the time to listen to their needs and push them to be the best that they can be. I can confidently say we are all ecstatic that Mr. Carlos Garcia is the recipient of the 2022 Teacher of the Year Award for Chittick School. Last, but absolutely not least, it is with great pleasure that we honor Ms. Ada Ramirez as Chittick Elementary School Support Staff Recognition Award winner for 2022. We are so fortunate that Ada decided to stay when she walked in as a substitute teacher. This is currently her seventh year working for East Brunswick Public Schools. Ada's present position is in Chittick's Integrated Preschool Class. She can often be seen in the early morning, outside by the bus stop, awaiting her students' arrival to school. No matter what the weather or situation, Ada greets her students with a bright smile and a warm, resounding "good morning." She is the brightest light on any day. During the school day, Ada is also a vital part of the workings of the preschool classroom. She not only tends to her students' social and emotional needs, but also pushes them forward academically. With the guidance of her classroom teacher, Ada works with small groups of preschoolers, helping them learn their vital foundational skills. Ada has also become an integral member of the Chittick School community, often taking additional assignments throughout the school to help students get through the day. Ada is wholeheartedly deserving of receiving the 2022 Support Staff Recognition Award.
Good evening. My name is Loretta Payette, and each day I have the honor and the privilege of working with the wonderful children, staff, and families at Frost Elementary School as their principal. We have a very special staff at Frost, and tonight you are about to hear of six of those people. When I think about our 2020 Teacher of the Year honoree, I hear the "Hello" song in my head, and I smile. Amanda Ryan is the picture of positivity. Even on the most difficult of days, Amanda finds the silver lining. She can make lemonade out of lemons. Ms. Ryan amazes all of those around her. She knows every child in the building, not only by name, but she knows all about their families, their interests, and their talents. She is passionate about teaching music, and her enthusiasm spreads to her students whether they are singing, dancing, composing, playing instruments, or researching musicians and musical styles. Ms. Ryan casts a spell over her audience. She makes every student feel like they could perform on Broadway. When she's not teaching, Amanda can be found engaging with students in the hallways, in the lunchroom, on the playground, or in the bus line. She walks through Frost School with a pep in her step, whistling tunes or singing. Amanda is always willing to step up and help in whatever capacity we need. Her favorite duty is in the morning car line, where she greets the students with compliments, kindness, and humor to get their day off to a positive start. For these and so many other reasons, I am proud to congratulate Ms. Ryan for being Next, meet Kevin Morton, our beloved security officer. He is one of the funniest people I have ever met in my life, and he's also Frost School's 2020 Support Staff winner. On a serious note, Kevin Morton is one of the kindest people I have ever had the pleasure of working with. He is the utmost professional who does his job diligently while with grace. His smile brightens up the morning for all who pass him by. He is never too busy to ask how you're doing, and he really cares about your response. Officer Kevin has a wonderful way with the students. He is a wonderful role model for students of all ages. He is a team player and is always willing to go above and beyond to do whatever is best for Frost School. Kevin has great relationships with the staff. He can often be found in the lobby, building relationships with colleagues well after his shift, even when he has a tea time. Frost is so fortunate to have such a caring security officer who not only works to keep us safe, but contributes to the warmth and caring climate of our school. Unfortunately, Kevin could not be here tonight in person, but we wanted to sincerely congratulate him on being Frost's Support Staff winner for 2020. Frost Elementary School's 2021 Teacher of the Year has had a truly exciting year. This year, her son Grayson became a big brother to her second son, Parker. Some people are born into this world to become teachers. Ashley Sax is one of those people. I remember the first time I met her when she was completing her student teaching at Balmunro. I ran over to interview her the day before winter break, and I was in my wacky winterwear. I arrived in my Santa leggings with antlers on my head and elf slippers on my feet. She was so professional. We sat and chatted, and I was so impressed by her poise and intellect. I knew from the moment I met her that this was a teacher that I wanted at Frost. Ashley strives to help each student realize his or her full potential. Her dedication is quite evident as she works diligently to ensure that each of her students acquire the skills necessary to become successful. In addition, Ashley is very involved in the school community. She is an integral member of the Bullying Prevention Core Committee, and she has also advised our student council. She is always willing to go above and beyond to get her students involved in making Frost an even better place. Congratulations to our 2021 Teacher of the Year, Ashley Sax. Congratulations to our 2021 Teacher of the Year, Ashley Sacks. Don Widmeyer is another treasured security officer at Frost School, and I am proud to recognize him as Frost School Support Staff winner of 2021. Don is an invaluable asset. His clever wit and contagious smile make him a pleasure to see when you walk into the security vestibule. Don has a very special bond with students of Frost, being that he taught third grade himself for nine years after retiring from the state police. He can always be found trying to cheer students up when they are down, or trying to redirect them when they are upset. He has a very special bond with one of our fourth graders. He seeks out Officer Don whenever he needs to decompress. Don has his own fan club, too. Every year, an unsolicited group of students become his groupies. They can be found surrounding him on the playground or by the buses, often giving him high fives or hugs. Don really enjoys participating in the Frost community. He is always willing to read to the students or speak to them about how police officers serve the community. As stated previously, Frost is so fortunate to have such caring security officers who not only work to keep us safe, but contribute to the warmth and caring climate of our school. Unfortunately, Don could not be here tonight, but we congratulate him on being Frost School's Support Staff winner for 2021. When I think of Matt Randall, I will forever think of Word Guy. When Matt first came to Frost, we charged him with being a superhero on the announcements each week to introduce a new vocabulary word to the students. He transformed weekly, wearing his cape and mask without hesitation. That's the kind of teacher Matt is. Nothing is too silly or too over the top for the sake of our students. You can always find him joking around and laughing with the kids, creating a fun and warm climate in the gym. On a more serious note, Matt is very aware of the range of athletic abilities that his students possess, and he has a special way of making every one of them feel like an athletic, like an Olympic athlete. He is extremely patient and passionate about teaching his students. In addition to making PE fun, he works hard at using assessment in his instruction by modeling for individual students and giving very specific feedback. All of the students love Mr. Randall, and so do we. Please join me in congratulating Frost School's 2022 Teacher of the Year. In my time as principal at Frost School, I've had the pleasure of working with one of the most conscientious lunch aids I have ever met. Laura Carreri, or Ms. Laura, as she is fondly referred to, is amazing. She has been a leader during lunch and recess since the first day she joined our team. Whenever we are short on lunch coverage, I just give the schedule to Laura, and I know that she will figure it out. When she is not covering lunch and recess, Ms. Laura can be found in her other favorite place: kindergarten. She is so patient and kind with the students. She is always available to draw, color, cut, and paste with the best of them. She also enjoys helping them with their sight words and their math fluency facts. Laura is always willing to help in whatever way she can. She is the definition of flexible, responsive, and reliable. That is why Ms. Laura is Frost School's 2022 Support Staff winner of the year.
Man, going after a bunch of English teachers is rough. Hi, I'm Joanne Schmelowitz. I'm the proud principal of Irwin Elementary School, and I'm here to talk about six people who I love very much who are part of the Irwin family. Irwin's Teacher of the Year for 2020 is Jaclyn Riley, who has every skill we look for in a highly effective teacher. Jackie is passionate about her craft. She is reflective and constantly seeking to improve her performance. Over the past several years, Jackie has taken on more and more teacher leadership initiatives at Irwin School. She's always asking, "How can I help? What do you need? What else can I do?" As a principal, this is the kind of teacher who truly allows for transformative practice in the building. Jackie loves a challenge and will take on every new opportunity offered to her. A dynamic teacher mentor, student mentor, and school culture builder, Jackie loves to champion for the underdog. Her tenacity to prove stereotypes wrong and to help our students be the best version of themselves is truly one of her finest traits as a human being, let alone as an educator. Jackie will not rest until every student under her care is getting the best quality instruction and feels the success everyone should when they leave our school each day, which makes her an ideal recipient of this award. Congratulations to Irwin School's 2020 Teacher of the Year, Jaclyn Riley. Irwin School's 2020 Support Staff of the Year is Bob Miller. Another fine example of leadership at Irwin School is our 2020 Support Staff winner, Bob Miller. Bob is affectionately known to students at Irwin as Mr. Bob, and as one of our more veteran school security officers, he is irreplaceable. During his time at Irwin School, he continues to be an incredible resource to our staff, including becoming our resident meteorologist. Bob helps me make the call for indoor and outdoor recess every day. He's also the voice of Irwin on our PA system, known to make announcements which bring the students to hysterics. But most importantly, Bob cares about our students with every ounce of his being and goes out of his way to ensure their safety both physically and emotionally. Irwin School is very fortunate to have us on her team, on our team. And Bob is unable to be here tonight, but he thanks everyone for this recognition, and I'm gonna make him listen to me say it to him in the office tomorrow, so it's fine. Congratulations, Bob. Irwin School's 2021 Teacher of the Year is Abby Salgato. Abby is our amazing physical education teacher, and she is known by all as the heartbeat of Irwin School. Abby goes above and beyond in both her innovative instruction as well as her creative and exciting programming for the building. Among Abby's many accomplishments are her EBEF grant to bring drum fit to our building and then presenting about it to our community in a showcase, putting on an amazing field day, or coming up with fun spirit ideas for our staff. She made an excellent elf when we needed one this year. Abby helps to run our mentor program and ensures that our students who need extra support and mentoring get time with their adult buddies. Abby ran one of our most popular clubs, our Cooking Club, for the past few years, which led our students to prepare many fine dishes using just a microwave and a hot plate. But Abby's most admirable qualities are her positivity, her infectious enthusiasm for all things Irwin, and her ability to bring people together, even in the most challenging of times. Irwin School is so fortunate to have her on our team. Congratulations to Abby. Irwin School's 2021 Support Staff of the Year is Vicky DeBarry. Vicky is the queen of the playground and is Irwin School's 2020 Support Staff winner. She has served Irwin for many years and has become the leader of our school aid staff. Vicky has a complete can-do attitude and takes on any task with her infectious smile. Our students love Ms. Vicky, especially our younger students, who she treats with great love and compassion. She helps them with everything from the slightest of playground boo-boos to mediating between students who may be having a hard day. Vicky is also a huge resource to our kindergarten team and works on many special projects for them. During remote learning, Vicky was instrumental in ensuring that all the materials our students needed, both at school and at home, were prepared and delivered into the hands of each student. No job is too big or too small for Vicky, and her contributions to Irwin have made a difference. Congratulations to Irwin's 2121 Support Staff winner, Vicky DeBarry. As a principal, you sometimes know right from the interview when you've met a special teacher. And Irwin School's 2020 Teacher of the Year is that teacher. From the moment Lindsay Rowe set foot into our building, she has been and continues to be a very special part of the Irwin family. As a member of the third grade team, Lindsay is beloved by her students and their families. Lindsay's positivity and enthusiasm for teaching permeates her classroom walls. Lindsay has so many strengths as a teacher, but most notably is her ability to see the good in every student, leading to a true belief that all students who enter her classroom will be successful. Lindsay constantly innovates in her instruction, and she's never satisfied until she's gotten it just right. Additionally, she's also just a lovely human being. In her role as a teacher and leader at Irwin and a first-class Spirit Day participant, Lindsay is known to go all out. In fact, I'm pretty sure she officially has a tutu for every occasion. Irwin School is so fortunate to have her on our team. Congratulations, Lindsay Rowe, Irwin School's 2022 Teacher of the Year. Last but certainly not least, I introduce you to Irwin School's 2022 Support Staff of the Year, Gina Cifaro. Gina has been a school aide at Irwin for the last several years and has made a large and lasting impact on our school community. Gina takes on any task that is asked of her, and always with a genuine smile. During remote learning, Gina was critical in preparing materials for our students and overseeing projects, both big and small, which ensured our students had what they needed to be successful. Most notably, Gina was a strong asset to our media specialist, Donna Swift, in organizing and cataloging our entire book room last year, which was an enormous, and I mean enormous it took us 10 months, task. Gina's devotion to our students is evident as she works with them during lunch and recess as a mediator, a coach, and a friend. We are so lucky to have her as a part of our team, and the staff often say to me that they couldn't live without her. Congratulations to Gina Cifaro.
Good evening. I'm Liz Dunn, principal of Lawrence Brook Elementary School, eager to share with you six stories of staff excellence. First, Lawrence Brook's 2020 Teacher of the Year, our beloved physical education teacher, Mike Finnegan. Who is also being recognized tonight for achieving 25 years of service. Surprising Mr. Finnegan with the Teacher of the Year announcement will forever be one of my favorite memories. We somehow secretly gathered nearly the entire school in the gym. This was pre-COVID, of course. Now, Mr. Finnegan is not one to be the center of attention, but he is so loved by the students and staff that absolutely everyone wanted to be there to congratulate him. As our PE teacher, he connects with each student at LB and continues to develop those relationships year after year. Students love being in his class because he ensures that all feel welcome and supported. Mr. Finnegan often reminds students that the goal is not perfection but progress, and with effort, they can and will be successful. Making mistakes is not only acceptable, it is encouraged. Visiting the gym, I have seen students overcome their fear of the balance beam during the gymnastics unit, practice good sportsmanship in advance of field day, and strategize as a team to solve complex tasks. I have also seen Mr. Finnegan do a perfect headstand, comfort students when they are struggling emotionally or behaviorally, and work diligently to promote an inclusive environment for all children all of the time. Outside of the gym, Mike is a trusted and supportive teacher leader who can be counted on to hold to the highest standards of honesty, integrity, and confidentiality. Congratulations, Mike. Lawrence Brook Support Staff Person of the Year in 2020 was Lorraine Phallic, secretary to and dear, dear friend to the principal. Lorraine's positive attitude and genuine caring demeanor makes our school a welcoming place for all who enter or call the office. She has established strong relationships with students, staff, and families. Each day, Lorraine balances the many tasks of the main office with a persistence and grace that is truly inspiring. She exemplifies professionalism and is known throughout the building to be a helper to all. Over the past few years, it has been exciting to collaborate with Lorraine as she evaluates office procedures, reinventing and streamlining a variety of tasks and responsibilities. You should see our shared Google folder. There is a how-to document for almost any task imaginable. Why? Because Lorraine is committed to ensuring that day after day, month after month, and year after year, we are growing and learning so that we can meet the needs of our community. Lorraine also has an uncanny ability to find the bright side in even the most challenging moments and is known at the end of a long day to bring smiles and laughter to the office. Congratulations, Lorraine. Your contributions to Lawrence Brook School are truly appreciated. Mrs. Christina Hoover was awarded Lawrence Brook's Teacher of the Year in 2021 during the school year in which she generously shared her technology expertise in assisting colleagues to deliver remote and hybrid instruction. She compiled resources, led professional development, created videos, and visited classrooms. We were quite fortunate to have her leadership during that challenging time. For example, who could forget her beautiful rendition of "Let It Load," sung to the tune of "Let It Go," improvised- of "Let It Go," improvised to motivate faster Wi-Fi streaming? But Mrs. Hoover's exemplary leadership in teaching was evident long before the pandemic. Mrs. Hoover has always valued academic, social-emotional, and behavioral excellence from her students. She leads by example, demonstrating how to articulate feelings, pursue interests, and expand her personal and professional knowledge. By doing so, her students leave her classroom with a love of reading, a drive to try their best, and an awareness that they are loved. Mrs. Hoover contributes positively to our school community as a leader on the school climate and safety team, the founder of the garden club, and co-advisor of the student council. Congratulations, Mrs. Hoover. Ms. Jessica Acosta was the deserving recipient of the Support Staff Person of the Year award in 2021. Ms. Acosta is a passionate, caring advocate for all students, known to be persistent in her desire to have all children meet their educational and social-emotional goals and feel welcomed in the school community. During her time at Lawrence Brook Elementary School, she quickly became involved in school initiatives, even becoming a regular on the LB TV Lawrence Brook News broadcast. During remote instruction, Ms. Acosta provided tips to students about how she and her family played games on Zoom to keep connected during COVID-19. Ms. Acosta partnered with LB's school nurse and student assistance specialist to provide insights about the importance of heart health during February's Heart Health Awareness Program, a cause very near and dear to her. Although she left the district to further her education, we will always be grateful for her positive contributions to our students and the Lawrence Brook School community. This year, our Teacher of the Year recipient is Lawrence Brook Elementary School teacher Julie Pulshuck. As one nominator wrote, Julie's ideology in teaching music is that of "Gesammtschentwerk." I think I did that well. It means "total artwork," a term popularized by composer Richard Wagner. Thank you. Total artwork. During her lessons, students are fully immersed in music, movement, reading, and reflection. Even the most reluctant of students becomes totally engrossed due to her careful planning, creativity, and commitment to differentiation. Julie always goes above and beyond when designing student concerts, planning her lessons, and connecting with the diverse student needs of the students that she teaches. Mrs. Pulshuck has a deep commitment to providing all students with opportunities to succeed. Last year, she served as a teacher representative on our newly-created Equity Committee and helped to lead a group of peers and parents toward reflecting on strategies for promoting a culturally responsive school environment. This commitment is mirrored in her lessons that frequently center on art and stories from different cultures. Students learn about musical instruments from around the world, as well as history and language. Mrs. Pulshuck devotes time to professional learning, attending virtual workshops on Saturdays and evenings, often collaborating with educators and leaders around the world, and then sharing her learning with colleagues and, of course, her students. Under her leadership, our chorus program continues to grow and grow and grow as students discover a passion for music. Mrs. Pulshuck is a wonderful asset to our school and so very deserving of this honor. Congratulations, Julie. The Lawrence Brook Support Staff Award recipient for this year is information technology specialist Robert Treptow, or Mr. Rob, as he is well-known to students. Balancing his time between meeting the many technology needs of students and staff at both Lawrence Brook Elementary School and Bowman Monroe, Mr. Rob is a whiz at multitasking. Somehow, he always seems to be a step ahead. The Wi-Fi was tricky in that room yesterday? Mr. Rob replaced the hub this morning. That new student needs a device? Mr. Rob has one ready. Need to switch that important professional development workshop to a hybrid model at the very last minute unexpectedly? No need to fear. Rob is here to make sure that everything runs smoothly, thank goodness. The students and staff appreciate his friendly demeanor and admire his vast knowledge. Thank you, Mr. Rob, for keeping our school connection strong. Thank you so much, and once again, congratulations to all of the award recipients this evening.
Thank you, principals. That was wonderful. Lastly, we have the pleasure of congratulating our staff members who achieved 25 years of dedicated service. First, we have Meredith Asher, amazing elementary teacher from Lawrence Brook School, who achieved the award in 2020. And Sherri Cagnina, Central School's amazing teacher, who achieved the award in 2021. Lawrence Brook is well-represented. Now, we have the amazing Christine Chinchar, Lawrence Brook, who just made her 25th year this year. And another amazing teacher from Bowman Monroe, Tina Ferrara. 25 years this year. And when you start, when you start teaching and the people are starting to hit 25 when you started, it's a little bit of a reality check, let me tell you. All the people I sat with had new teacher orientation. And of course, our double award winner tonight, Mike Finnegan from Lawrence Brook, 2021. And we are so proud and happy that our next 25 years of service winner from 2021 came back after retirement, the amazing Sylvia Rosenberg. And another very big loss to the district when he retired, Joe DeSilva, who has worked in most of the schools in our district. By the way, if any of you are interested in coming back after retirement, we can talk because the law has changed. Next, we have the wonderful Karen Seleski from Lawrence Brook School. I don't think I saw Karen come in, but we'll congratulate her. She achieved 25 years of service in 2021. And also some other friends who couldn't be here tonight. Kelly Desmond, Central School, 2022. Nita Landman, Lawrence Brook School, 2022. Christine Smith, retired elementary teacher at Central, who achieved 25 years last year. Carol Vetri, retired amazing secretary from Central in 2020. And who also couldn't be here, Noreen Turley, who also won one of the Support Staff Awards. Congratulations. Congratulations. And now, we'll turn the meeting back over to Mrs. Lax.
Who is going to put us into a recess so that we can properly celebrate all of these achievements tonight. So, you're going to have a little recess with refreshments donated by the East Brunswick Education Association Pride Grant. Thank you so much to the EBEA. So, congratulations again to everyone tonight. Okay. Everybody's back. Everybody's back. Okay. Moving on in our agenda, we are going to have a presentation on school start times and two-tier busing by Mr. Juliana.
Thank you, President Lax, and good evening, everyone. So, yes, this is a presentation on school start times and two-tier busing. And so, as we wait for the slides to come up on the screen. Thank you. So, let's talk a little bit about, initially about, the tiered busing. So, we currently run a three-tier busing system, which means that we initially start out the day with one set of buses that are handling the high school and the junior high school. They pick up the children on the way to school, drop them off at school, and then they proceed on to the next tier, Tier Two, which is Hammershold. They pick up the students that are going to Hammershold in the morning, drop them off at Hammershold, and then they proceed on to the third tier, which is all the eight elementary schools, picking up the students from their designated bus stops and then proceeding to do a drop-off. And then, in the afternoon, it's the reverse, going from school to home. Churchill and the high school initially, then circling back to Hammershold to pick up the students, to take them home, and then circling back to the eight elementary schools. I'm going to show you a chart that reflects the breakdown of what our student populations are, and these are the enrollments as of October. They haven't changed all that much for purposes of this discussion, but what you'll see in the column that reflects transported students, you see it's kind of an hourglass circumstance. We're transporting over 2,000 students for kindergarten through fifth grade. We transport roughly 1,200 students in the sixth and seventh grade segment, and then we're transporting almost 2,900 students in the eighth through 12th segment. That hourglass circumstance really results in an imbalance in our transportation system. We don't require the same number of buses in each of those situations. It's not the most efficient circumstance. So, what we have is, we have transportation tiers that are in balance, not the same number, which ends up resulting in additional transportation costs when we're working through contracts with contracted vendors. There is, based on the schedules, the times between the schools, there's insufficient, what's called, deadhead time. And that's the amount of time that the buses are traveling without any passengers. That's by the time in the morning when they, let's say they drop off the students at the high school and at Churchill, and then are proceeding to do their first pickup for the Hammershold routes, that's deadhead time, no passengers. Now, it's important to have sufficient amount of deadhead time in between so that the buses can get to their destinations in a reasonable amount of time, but we don't have that at all the tiers. We have, in some cases, a very compressed amount of time in between the tiers. One of the other problems is the strains that it puts on the limited availability of transportation services. As the board knows, and certainly as the public has heard us discuss many times over the last several years, transportation services are at a premium, and it's very difficult to engage with contractors to be able to take on the routes. It's also become more and more expensive. And just anecdotally, and this is not for a regular route, but I'm going to identify one circumstance that just arose within the last week or so, and that is just for one day of transporting for one athletic team to an athletic event, the cost of that one bus was about $2,000. $2,000. So, we need to really look at what the best use of our resources is and the most efficient way to be able to transport our students, and so, we're having this conversation. One of the other impacts is certainly on adverse weather days. Without sufficient time in between our routes, it certainly requires delayed openings. So, we looked at various issues of how can we mitigate the current circumstances with transportation? So, looking at this next chart, you see the one that was on the previous slide, but also what transportation would look like on a two-tier system. And on this two-tier system, we have more or less a more balanced transportation system, where the pre-K through sixth grade would be in one tier, and the seventh grade through 12th grade would be on a second tier. Now, I want to apologize at this point because I know this is very dry, this is not very exciting, but it is very important and it is relevant to the overall operations of the district and being able to get our students back and forth to school in a timely and in a safe way. So, you see that we're more or less balanced, much better than we were or than we are currently with the hourglass circumstance, which means that we can better utilize our transportation services, not only those that we have in-house, but also those that we would be contracting for. So, let's move on in terms of how we make this work. So, this next slide shows what the current school day is for students in pre-K through five, six, and seven, eight, nine, and 10, 12. What we are proposing to do is to bring in a two-tier of times. This two-tier of times would be, starting out, and we'll start from the bottom up on that lower chart, for the seventh through 12th grade students, so that would be Churchill and the high school for next year. Student day would begin at 8:00 a.m. That's about 35 minutes later than what the day currently is. Currently, the day starts for students, I believe it's 7:26, if I'm not mistaken. And then, the student day would end at 2:45 p.m. For the next level of students, pre-K through six, and this would be all the elementary schools in Hammershold, that day would move to 9:00 a.m. and would end at 3:35 for students. So, not much change for the students at that level. What are the benefits? So, the benefits are, we balance our transportation tiers, as I already mentioned, much more efficient. We are able to better manage what the needs are in terms of transportation, improving the efficiency of the overall system. It improves the times between tiers, so there's no rushing happening between one tier and the next, either in the morning or in the afternoon. It allows the opportunity for something that the board has discussed numerous times for probably, I'd say maybe about seven years now, if I remember correctly, about seven years, and that is healthy student start times for the upper grades. Many studies have come out talking about how students in the high school grades really benefit from coming in at a later time than coming in at, or having to be up at 6:00 in the morning to prepare and get ready to get to their bus stops and ultimately be at school before 7:30. So, this is a move in the right direction in that regard. This system would not adversely impact after-school clubs, it would not adversely impact athletics, and any other after-school activities. Provides for safer travel times during inclement weather. Provides for safer travel times during inclement weather. Because of that buffer in between, the buses aren't, I would, I just hesitate to say, but you know, there's always a schedule that has to be kept because transportation is a system that has to keep on schedule. So by allowing that buffer, I would venture to say that it provides for a greater degree of safety. Not that our bus drivers are not safe, but I think it just provides a better better buffer in there for them. And then lastly, it improves the opportunities for us to, for the district to secure late bus services. Late bus services, if you are parents and certainly students in the district, this year has been a true challenge. Every day, we have late bus services that are being canceled because we don't have the coverage. And so we feel that the revision to the schedule and going to a two-tier system would also provide us with opportunities to not only be able to secure perhaps contracted services, but even support those in-house as well. And so that is the recommendation, that's a recommendation that is on the agenda for this evening. It's important, particularly because we need to go to bid to establish our routes. And one of the things I didn't note when we were going through the charts, but with the change in the grading structure, that imbalance that I exhibited earlier becomes even further exacerbated. So we want to make sure that we are addressing our transportation needs in an efficient way, doing so reasonably, and being able to best service our students. So that concludes the presentation on school start times and two-tier busing. Thank you.
Thank you, which I very much appreciate. We have been talking about this for a very long time, and I have to give a shout out to Karen Felmagedde, who's not even a parent unfortunately in the district anymore, because it probably was about seven, eight years ago that she brought us to this. And I, for one, am very appreciative of all the work that's gone into this, but I have to also say that one area is the health of the students. And what was it, five, six years ago, Barbara, that we went to a conference, actually speaking about the health impacts for the high school students because they're doing so much more, especially kids taking pretty vigorous course loads with jobs, with the after-school sports, which I'm thrilled to see this does not adversely affect. So I just want to say kudos on that. And I'm going to open up if any board members have any questions. Barbara, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say, I also want to reiterate thank you. I know this is a lot of work, you know, for those in the community who are not as familiar with the busing schedule as I wasn't when we started all this. It's a lot of work, it takes time, there's a lot of things behind the scenes. The teachers, thank you for, for, you know, making this happen, and for the administration. And honestly, it's the best for the students. Anyone who has a student who goes at the current time knows that they are not able to do their best work at 7:26 in the morning, especially with the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic, and mental health is a priority. There's improved academic performance, there's also extra time to eat for breakfast, they've also found reduced accidents, the seniors who are driving, they're having fewer accidents, so that's another. They've also found better physical health, fewer behavioral issues, I mean, the list goes on and on, fewer tardies, fewer truants. So thank you so much to our administration for making this happen, and it's an exciting time that we're at least, you know, one of the districts that's making a real effort to make this happen. So I can't believe it's happening, I'm a little verklempt. It's a yiddish word. Very excited, so I better not talk yet because it hasn't passed yet.
President Lax, if I could, I wanted to just let the board know, this is actually a two-step process. We are talking about asking the board for approval of the student day tonight. We are currently in negotiations with the EBEA in terms of the teacher day, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Hong.
Yes, I agree with the Jawa said, but it's very good for our students healthy, so it's good for our families. But my question is, can we find enough bus driver? Because switching from three tires to two tires, which means for each tire, we should have more school bus drivers. At this time, it looks like not too many people are willing to work. So my question is, can we secure enough bus drivers for this one? And my second concern is, do you anticipate the teachers' union will support this this change?
So I'll respond to the bus driver component. And so, yes, I think that this will actually be attractive. We'll be able to manage with our internal fleet, so that won't be a problem there, but we will require some additional buses, but the large contractors will actually see this as very favorable.
Okay, thank you. So how about the teachers' union? Do you think they will support this change?
Go ahead, Matt, I'm sorry.
Do I have to turn this on, or?
No, it's on.
Mr. Hong, the teachers' union, so we have a duty to negotiate over terms and conditions of employment, which we're engaged in with the EBEA. The main issue here would be, we can't disrupt what the contract provides in terms of prep periods, et cetera, and the issue is the length of day of the teachers. When I say length of day, it's the length of teaching time. And so we've been working on that to ensure that it's equal to what it presently is, or in some cases, less. So it will not have an impact. We're working very well with the union, and we will continue to do so, so that we can have an agreement as to that. So I think we will be able to come to it, but we're cognizant of what we have to do to have the EBEA agree to it.
Same here.
Mrs. West.
I just wanted to thank the administrators for their work on this. Since I began as a teacher really long time ago and doing my graduate work, I've been reading research about the need for more sleep in the middle school and high school years developmentally, that those students need more sleep and the later start time would be better for them. And throughout my entire educational career, I've just heard districts say again and again, but it can't be done, it can't be done. And I'm extremely proud to see East Brunswick leading the way with this because it can be done, and this could be such a great benefit for our students, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Winston, do you have it?
I can't hear what you said.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a quick point of clarity, Dr. Valeski, go back to something you said, the monitors aren't very good up here, I really couldn't hear you clearly. You said that, you said that at this point, we're voting just on the time changes, but there are other issues that still need to be ironed out, did I understand that correctly?
We're asking for your vote tonight on simply the student day, and then the component with that would be the teacher workday, and that's what we're currently negotiating with the EBEA on, to make sure that we're compliant with our existing contract, or that we have a memorandum of understanding to modify that contract.
All right, good, thank you very much. No, I, listen, I think it's great to have later start times, I think that goes without saying, I do think it's beneficial to students, we've had community experts present to us, and I absolutely agree in that capacity. I do, I do take pause, though, if we do have a negotiated item, I understand what Mr. Giacobi said, but if there is an item out for negotiation right now that is attached to this, it would be premature to put ourselves in a position where we don't have half of the equation solved. I understand the start times, let's do it, but if it comes back with the, with the, with the union situation that would ultimately increase the monetary requirements for the district, that adds on to this issue, and that is yet to be resolved. I understand that you anticipate that being resolved easily, but at this point in time, that is not resolved. We're not ready to vote this.
I actually think that, I'm not going to tell the board how they vote or how not to vote, if there's no impact in the, there's not going to be an impact in the length of day, that's been resolved here. The length of the day, if you look at the length of the day, when you look at what Mr. Juliana put out, the overall length of the day is equal to or shortened in all instances. The contact time of teachers, teaching, teaching in the classrooms, that has to be equal to or less. And so we know if there's, those are the parameters, we have to just make the schedules work. This is really more of a scheduling issue, and we're working collaboratively with the unions on that, but we're not looking to have any type of impact that would result in a monetary impact whatsoever. I think with, Mr., I'm trying to see, there was that one schedule, okay, so if you look at the current day, where it has the current day and the current schedule, and then the new ones, you can see that the pre-K, pre-K to four ends at 3:35, that's 10 minutes later, but it starts 10 minutes, you know, it, the way it works, it's, we've worked it out. And the other thing to remember, too, is in the contract, the one thing that we are looking at, is the contracts have the teachers arriving 20 minutes early, before kids even come. And so we have a 20-minute gap that we can reduce so that teachers don't have increased contact time, and that's what we're working with.
All right, and I appreciate that, but you guys used the word negotiation, okay? And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Giacobi, but in fact, we are in negotiations on that point. Second point you brought up was the five-minute window. So you've reduced it to a five-minute window before school, and it's my understanding a five-minute window after school. So it is your contention that we can get all elementary school students on the bus with supervision from, from teachers in five minutes?
I, yeah, I wouldn't ask, I don't know why you're, I'm, I'm.
I'm not asking you, I'm talking to Dr. Valeski.
Oh, yeah, okay, I was going to say.
No, I didn't, I didn't use the word mad or Mr. Giacobi prior to that question. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Winston, after you and I spoke regarding the issue, we did rework the schedule, and we actually have some flexibility to increase that time in the beginning of the day and the end of the day, to ensure there is supervision of the students for both arrival and dismissal. But students would go directly to class off the bus in the morning, and we do believe the schedule is quite workable, given the parameters that we have right now, that we have communicated back to the association, but they are reviewing that, and that's part of the negotiation process. But, but I feel strongly, we can do this.
Oh, I feel strongly we can too, but nonetheless, we're in negotiations.
Correct.
So with that said, I do hesitate committing to anything until we have the other half of the equation as anticipated. I'm sure it'll go well. I'm sure it's going to go exactly as you have planned, but I don't have that counted on, as you've used the word negotiation, which me takes pause. So I appreciate your answers, thank you.
Mr. Corangelo.
Don't we have to have this part in place before we go to the teachers, right? We have to have this part in place to make a move.
I think the most.
Well, I just want to make a statement, I don't want to move on, I don't want to discuss that. All right, so also, how are we going to handle the late buses since we're having a little bit of an issue now? Can you elaborate on that concept? You know, securing the bus drivers for the late buses?
If, as Mr. Juliana explained in the presentation, we think the later start time gives us an opportunity to secure more late bus drivers.
How do we know that?
We don't, we're anticipating this will provide an opportunity. But just to clarify for the board, the reason we put this on the agenda was, we know there's an urgency, there's a timeless, timeliness factor in actually putting together the routes and putting the routes out to bid. Whether the board accepts those routes or not, it's the construction of the routes to make this all work, with the anticipation that all the other pieces can be accomplished.
Yep, but the first piece is getting our organization done, is what our times are.
We are under, you know, a time constraint to be able to go to bid, so this is really critical for us to be able to move that process forward, yes.
What would a one-week delay in this do, since we are meeting one week from today? Would that, would that destroy your schedule to give time for negotiations to complete?
Mr. Juliana.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the.
A one-week delay, he wants to know.
We, I think we're at a point that we really need to move this forward. I understand, but we've also been holding this for a while now to move those conversations forward. I think we're at the edge. My concern from a practical sense is that, you know, other school districts are going to bid, and we then, if we're too late, we will not have the opportunity to really receive the services from the largest contractors, which are the ones that we really want to be part of this.
And I agree with you on that, but is one week a deal breaker for everything you just said? Talking about seven days, so negotiations can continue and be completed before making this commitment? Does one week ruin this after waiting this many years?
We should have been out to bid already.
But we're not.
I know, we're not.
So does one, so does one week do it?
I, I have to say, my concern, I could not recommend waiting. I personally could not recommend waiting because I'm highly concerned that we're going to miss a window of opportunity.
All right.
I'd like to offer motion to table this.
This isn't, this is just a discussion, the item is not on the table right now.
Oh, you said it, we're voting on it this evening.
It's later in the agenda.
Fine, thank you.
Another question.
Yes.
If we go forward with the bidding, and for some reason it didn't work out, oh, if we go forward with the bidding, and for some reason it didn't work out, we still need those buses, right? We still need to go out to bid for the buses, would that be the prudent thing to do so at least we can secure the buses? Mr. Juliana?
That's, that's what we believe, yeah, that's what we believe to do, is, you know, this, we understand this is contingent of moving the entire thing forward.
Absolutely, and the teachers are, you know, have, you know, this is very important to include all shareholders, stakeholders, but from what I'm understanding, is if we don't go out to bid for the buses, just because of the logistics of it.
Right.
We won't even have the option to go forward because we may be precluded from most of the reputable bus companies.
That's the fear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Nora has been very patient down there, and we had a really good night hearing about all these wonderful staff and support staff. I don't know which elementary school, was your elementary school here this evening, or is that next week?
No, I went to Warren Storfer.
Ah, me too. Okay, so then we'll wait for your remarks next week on some of your favorite teachers, and I would love to hear what's going on at the high school.
All right. Last Friday, like Dr. Valeski had mentioned, we had a decision day event for all the seniors, hosted by the PTSA and the counseling department, just to celebrate what our next plan, our plans are for the next coming years. That was very enjoyable, we got to skip a little bit of class and just see where everyone is going, and got some ice cream. Last Friday was also the senior variety show, which is another fundraiser for the 2022 prom. There were a couple of great performances, and that was very fun to watch. I actually just came right before this from the boys volleyball senior night, we have our last couple senior nights of the, this school year. Post-seasons are starting up with, for GMCs and states. Folio night was last week, which is a student art exhibit at the high school. And today, I also took my last ever AP exam.
Wow.
It's very exciting. Testing continues throughout next week, and then the following week are the makeup exams. Next Friday, the student council is the, hosting an escape room event in the media center that promises to be very exciting. On Monday, the ninth, girls lacrosse is having a Dine to Donate at Jersey Mike's. And I just wanted to say a little bit for Teacher Appreciation Week, I've, like I just said, I went to Warren Storfer, I've grown up in East Brunswick my entire life, and I'll always be grateful for that and for having the opportunity to attend East Brunswick schools. My teachers and all of East Brunswick teachers are amazing educators, but they're also steadfast supporters of their students, and especially over the last couple of years, which have been extremely difficult. Our teachers have done an amazing job of adapting and making our experience at school the best that it possibly can be. And I just wanted to briefly say thank you for all that they've done for us, and happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you. You have to follow that. So, yes, lucky you, our public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 school district budget.
So we are here for the public hearing on the 20-
So we are here for the public hearing on the 2022-2023 school district budget. This is a mandatory requirement under the law. The board has previously approved a tentative budget. This hearing begins with a presentation overviewing the, the budget details and some important facts, and then it's followed by an opportunity for the public to, to comment. So let's begin. As soon as the PowerPoint decides to cooperate. Okay. We'll start with some district facts. So I thought this first one, and starting out, of course, that the district is in the business of educating students. We also need to function as a business. We have nearly 2,000 employees. We have lots of facilities, 13 individual facility sites. There is a lot to manage and run on a day-to-day basis. So let's start with the first couple of items here, and I thought it was important to, to show two points in terms of enrollment. In 2021, in the 2021 school year, East Brunswick ranked as the 26th largest school district in New Jersey. By the fall of this past year, fall of 2021, we rose to the 24th largest school district in New Jersey. We're the largest employer in East Brunswick. And in terms of our student population, and this was a benchmark of October of 2021, and that date is when we have to submit our official enrollments to the state for funding purposes. Our official enrollment was at 8,346 students. When we look at that number in comparison to the populations of surrounding towns, we are a town within a town. If we look at Milltown, Milltown, and these are, this is official data, so the most recent data was from 2019, but Milltown was at under 7,000 in the total population of the town. Spotswood at 8,200-plus. East Brunswick Public Schools at over 8,300. South River at 16,000, and the municipality of the township of East Brunswick at 48,000 and change. So we're right in the middle of that, and we are a town within a town. So it's, it's quite impressive in terms of the number of students, and that's not even counting the over 1,500 employees. So moving on from there, we operate a major transit system. So when you look at the, and we're back to transportation again, but when you look at the, the transportation system that we run on a day-to-day basis, we have approximately 570 routes. When you take the number of miles traveled per day and take that out for the entirety of 180 days, we are running 3.44 million miles. Think about that. 3.44 million miles. And when you take the number of students that we transport on a daily basis, in the morning and in the afternoon for 180 days, if they were all individuals, different individuals at each one of those points in time, that's 2.43 million passengers. So when we look at this data, I like to just point to, point to this couple of items beyond that in terms of equivalency. So when we look at the mileage, it's equivalent to 137 trips around the earth, 14 one-way trips to the moon, and 1/10 of the distance to Mars. Again, continuing on that we are also a business, and some important facts from the district as a major food service provider. These, this data is really extraordinary. When we look at the data for the number of lunches served, the à la carte services and the breakfast services, in comparison to the information that we gleaned from the restaurant business data, comparatively, it's just astronomical. And the data that we're showing here for district lunches, à la carte, and breakfast, that's as of April 27th. We're not even through the entirety of the year yet. In terms of facilities, which I mentioned earlier, we have over 1.4 million square feet of facilities in the district. And just some comparatives here to give you a basis of what we have in comparison to other well-known sites, and also in terms of land. One of the things that we've talked about many times over the years, and we continue to be proud of these efforts, and that is the, the efforts that we make in controlling costs and our participation in shared services. We do so through our energy programs, we do so through cooperative purchasing opportunities with other districts, in-house transportation services, as well as the multi-tiered busing services that we have in place through the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey in cooperation with the township. We work very closely with the township in, in controlling costs and sharing services, similarly with the county of Middlesex, and particularly with a refinancing debt. And that is an item that the board acted on recently in our refinancing of debt, which resulted in a, a reduction in our debt service, which is quite significant. And I'll talk about the reduction in the debt, the impact of the reduction in debt service in just a few moments. As a revenue producer. I'm sorry? Yes? Wanted to make sure that the slide moved with me. So as a revenue producer, through our early morning program and then, and our after skids, after-school kids' elementary school program, the encore program that we have at Hammersfield and Churchill, the Early Learning Academy, and so forth, I'm not going to read the entire list, but through these various efforts, these programs generate revenue which go to support the budget. It's an offset and an alternate revenue source to, that enables the district to do more, to do more for the students, to improve our facilities. It's quite important, and I think it's quite impressive because I would venture to say that there are a few districts around that do what East Brunswick does. Striving for excellence. Our motto is excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. There are just countless student achievement awards received over the years and numerous staff accomplishments. And this is a citation that I, I like to point to, and I will read this, that East Brunswick High School is without a doubt one of the finest schools in the nation. It is a school that has a very strong academic program, supported by ample financial resources and guided by excellent leadership. This is from the Middle States Association of Colleges and Schools Accreditation for Growth Validation Team. That, that kind of says it all, and, and that statement really is applicable, in my opinion, to the entire district, applicable to every one of our schools. And now moving on in terms of financial management, and I think this is quite important, and the district, and the way we manage our finances and have done so for many, many, many years, and we put ourselves out to be reviewed independently. And over the years, we have received certificate of excellence and financial reporting from both the Association of School Business Officials International. That's been for eight consecutive years through fiscal year 2020. Reviews are still in process. And then from the Government Finance Officers Association for six consecutive years through fiscal 2019. Those are not, not easy achievements. They require quite a lot of work and are reflective of the financial management that the board entrusts in us. So let's get into some budget facts. And we'll start with tax levy and tax levy banking. The first item is, and we said this at the introduction of the tentative budget, and I think it's, this is probably the best news that I have to report, and that is that there is no increase to the general fund tax levy. No increase to the general fund tax levy. That means that the level of tax that could have been raised of $2.7 million will be banked for up to three years. Should the need arise in future budgets, then the opportunity is there to be able to utilize it if the need arises. That will be driven by what happens with state aid. The reason we were not, not, the reason we did not have a need to increase our general fund tax levy this year is because the state actually came through on state aid, something that has been a long time in coming. One of the other important components is the fact that our debt service fund tax levy, and that's the money that goes to pay for the mortgages, the debt on the buildings, that will decrease by over $1 million. And I mentioned earlier in terms of refinancing efforts, and that's something that the board has always been supportive of, and that $1 million-plus dollar reduction is a result of those refinancing efforts. So the tentative budget that was presented reflected a total of $179,626,947. It was about, it's a balanced budget in both revenue and appropriations. It represents a 4.27% increase over the current year. And then the next portion of the slide shows the tax change. No increase in, in the general fund tax, a decrease in the debt service fund tax, a net decrease of over $1 million, and a tentative composite tax decrease of nearly 0.73%. Moving on to state aid, this is a comparative of what's happened with state aid over the years, and this goes back to 2009 in that very first leftmost bar, and it exemplifies what's happened in terms of state aid and the burden, ultimately the burden that had been placed on local schools, and particularly in this case, let's talk about East Brunswick, because costs rise from year to year. But as you could see on this chart, we had a drastic reduction back in 2011, remained relatively flat for many, many years, until most recently, last year, we had a very modest increase, and then this year, we had a sizable increase that, as I said, results in a zero tax increase for next year. This budget allows us to maintain excellent class sizes. The class size averages throughout our elementary schools are on screen, ranging between 17 and 18 students per grade, and in, as I said, these are averages, and there will be some schools where, and some grades where those actual class sizes will be less in some cases. In terms of our budgetary impacts, what has resulted in the overall budget increase? We start with, certainly we have a salary base. The, we are in the people business, and so the majority of our budget deals with staffing, and we have new staffing in the budget, teachers and the like to support our instruction. So that is the lion's share of the increase. There'll be an increase in health benefits, although overall, the health benefit increase is at roughly 3%, which is rather modest in comparison to much of what is out there these days. Transportation services. Facilities maintenance. Charter schools, I'll talk further about charter schools in a moment. Insurance, that's non-health benefits, but it is other insurance, liability insurance and the like. And then there are various offsets that bring us to a total budgetary impact on the tentative budget of $7.36 million. So let's talk about charter school impact, and I do believe this is important for the community to be aware of. Since the inception of the charter school in East Brunswick in 2009, or 2011, actually, that has, that has had substantive impact upon resources that have come out of the East Brunswick Public School budget to support the charter school in town. And what you see here is how much that has grown over the years because the charter school receives a share of the state aid that the district receives. So for fiscal 2023, the charter school is receiving in excess of $4.6 million from East Brunswick Public Schools. That's $4.6 million that otherwise would have remained to the benefit of the school district and the students. Moving on. During the tentative budget, I presented what was being sought in terms of a shared services agreement with the township of East Brunswick. Since then, the board has approved an agreement, the township council has approved an agreement, so that agreement is in, is in place for financing, which the, will come from the district's budget to pay. The district's budget will pay for the, for the debt that is incurred, and this, that is to provide for the following. We'll be providing minor paving improvements and sidewalk replacements. We're going to be moving forward with a project to install HVAC systems at Chittick, Frost, Irwin, and Warren Storfer. The temporary classroom units at Churchill were originally on a lease-purchase basis, so as a result of financing that through the shared services agreement, we will see savings as a result of doing it this way. Demolition and remediation of the old maintenance yard on Cranberry Road. And this is a, a big project coming up. Phase three athletic complex, which will create an athletic complex for girls varsity and JV softball and field hockey at the high school. These next two slides show an overview of the high school site, and this slide that just came up shows essentially an area to the left of the stadium where the softball fields and field hockey would be created. It's currently a wooded area. It will be cleared. It's undergoing testing right now, and the initial steps of planning have begun for that project. Someone asked me today in a phone call if I had a timeline for that. It's a little premature to be able to offer a timeline, but rest assured, as soon as I have something to report, I will share that with the board and with the community. So we have a budget here that is, that is presented, which will be final adoption next week, and this is an important statement that comes out of the statute because any changes to the budget have to be discussed here, and so there are a couple of changes to the budget. This is the only opportunity when a budget can be changed. There can be no further change to the final budget after this date, and I would caution any changes beyond now, beyond what has been presented, because everything has to be run through the state's budgetary system to ensure that it meets all of the checks and cross-checks and calculations that, that they have embedded within their systems. So essentially, what we have here this evening is the final budget that is recommended for adoption next week. So what are those components in terms of changes? There'll be an, an increase in the enterprise equity transfer to support the budget. There's a conversion of a secretarial position at Churchill from a part-time position to a full-time position, and that is to, to support the needs of the main office because of the addition of the seventh grade up at Churchill, so there'll be additional support needed there. ESIP, which is the Energy Savings Improvement Program, which was concluded. ESIP, which is the Energy Savings Improvement Program, which was concluded a few months ago, and that was a major program that was to essentially implement many energy savings components throughout the district, improved lighting, energy management systems, some things that are quite boring to the general public but quite exciting because they save us money. But there is a post-project support component in those contracts where the company that worked with us, which was Honeywell, they're providing support for over a two-year period, and so there is a fee associated with that, and we need to make sure that, that we have the funds to pay for that cost. Custodial Services relates to the TCUs, the addition of the temporary classroom units at Churchill. We had received the updates in terms of what the necessary staffing would be, and so that's an absolute necessary adjustment. We'll see a slight reduction in utilities as an offset to the ESIP adjustment I mentioned earlier. Fiscal education, teachers at the elementary schools, this is for K-4, 1.5 FTEs based on the projected scheduling for the elementary schools, that's what will be necessary, and that covers the salary and health, health benefit portion. I'm sorry, I'm talking and I did not move the slide forward, so I apologize for that. It's difficult when you can't really see the screen. It's one of the benefits of being at Hammerhill, that we could see this, see the screen. So I mentioned the utility adjustment, the fiscal education teachers, and then we have adjustments for athletic uniforms and replacements. We had received updated pricing from our vendors for that, and then also an update to the athletic uniforms for seventh and eighth grade football to ensure that the entire team is fully outfitted. that brings us to the fiscal 2023 budget revised for final adoption at $179,819,848. It is a balanced budget on both the estimated revenue and appropriations side. Results in a 4.38, or reflects a 4.4.38% increase over the current year budget, and there's no change to what I presented earlier in terms of taxes, so that there is no tax increase on the general fund. There is a tax decrease on the debt service for an overall tax decrease of point, almost The next key action date will be next Thursday, May 12th, where the final budget will be adopted by the board. And lastly, we will be posting the budget information on the district website where it is accessible to the public. And that concludes the budget presentation. So Mrs. Lax, this is now the opportunity for the public hearing on the budget. Board members, of course, if there are questions, and then the public.
Okay. Should I start with the public versus the boardroom? Sorry. Do the questions.
Let's see if there are public comments.
Okay. If you give me one second, I'm going to open them to the public, and then I will take questions from individual board members. If there's anybody out there in the public that wishes to speak to the board on this presentation and this presentation only, so we will have the regular public portion after this, but if you have any comments on this portion, there's a microphone set up here. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this portion? And if you would state your name and address for the record.
Chad Seeler, 11 Apache Court, East Brunswick. I'll be back up later on for more. Just wanted, the seventh and eighth grade football uniform. It's nice to get new uniforms, but we don't have shoulder pads underneath that fit the kids, or helmets that are safe.
Alex Bealman, Six Douglas Road. I have a general question when it came to, or at least a concern that has to do with the construction of the new softball field, I believe, over by the football field in the high, over at the high school. And that is that there is the Zelinski Farm Market that is right next to, when you get past the woods over there, and I'm not sure exactly where that property line is, but it seems like it's getting really close to that, so I'm not sure if there's any issues when it came to where that property line is and where the construction is. Because I know there has been issues in the past when it came to the football field and how crowds were dealing with it over there, and how that, how the walk, how they would have a nature walk during science through that area, at least when I was there, so. Rest in my concern on that.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, then I know some board members may have had some questions. Mr. Carangelo, you have a question? Or Stephen?
Well, thank you for the great presentation. With regards to the new routes for the buses, we are at 570 right now. Would the new routes be less than 570? Because we're at three tiers, if we go to two tiers, so that would equate to less routes?
So, yes. Going off the top of my head, mathematically, yes.
Sounds great.
No, actually, I have to think about that a minute, because it's not just the going to two tiers, but we're still transporting the same number of students. In terms of the packages, because it's, the contracts are awarded on the multiple-tier basis, so we will require additional buses. So if we talk in terms of buses, we will require additional buses, and those have been budgeted.
Okay. And also the fuel cost, would the new tier or two-tier, you know, have less gas being used? If there is less?
No, I would not anticipate there being less, because again, if we're still transporting the same number of students, it's, it's probably going to be about the same.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. This brings us to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment and educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. A participant will be limited to three minutes duration, elapsed time will be determined by the board secretary. And I remind everyone, as we always do, that this is the public portion, and it is a one-way dialogue. The board is going to stay quiet and listen to everything you have to say. We will direct you to leave your name and information if there's follow-up that need, that is needed, but please, again, never take our silence up here as not listening or not caring. So that being said, I think we had some people that were interested in speaking, and come on up, and same, same drill, please list your name and your address for the record.
Hello, Kelly Kelleher, 94 Independence Drive. I just had a concern based on the new start times for the school. I actually think it's great if I don't have to get my kid up that early in the morning. I just had a question because I know that you had stated that all of the start times would be either the same or a little bit less than they were before, or the school duration. However, the new school start time for grades K through six is going to be 9:00 AM, where currently in elementary school, it's at 9:10, and it ends currently at 3:25, but this is now saying it's going to end at 3:35. So that, according to this paper, is adding 10 minutes to the beginning of the day and 10 minutes to the end of day, which is a total of 20 minutes longer than what we currently have. So I just don't know if there was like a typing error or something, I just wanted some clarification on that, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to the board? Two gentlemen, huh? All right.
Good evening again. Chad Seeler, 11 Apache Court, East Brunswick. Firstly, I want to apologize to the board members who have not heard from me in the last day or so, because I just didn't have your numbers, so I apologize to those two individuals. Secondly, I'm here to talk about St. Bart's Buffaloes football and your idea to have seventh and the eighth grade football at Churchill next year. I'm going to speak with my heart first, because I was formerly the East Brunswick Soccer Vice President, I coached fast-break basketball, I went from being the football coordinator at St. Bart's to now being its president. I'm also an ex-board member of the Board of Education, so I know how things work. From my heart, this is tough for me to be up here, because I have a child who's going in the seventh grade. And based on what I've seen in the past, me coming out here and advocating for St. Bart's, I've been in a board here where people, past and present, only have done things to better, for the better of their kid and voted that way. I was not one of those people, and right now I am putting the future of my son's athletic career in jeopardy by being up here to talk about this, because there has been in the past repercussions against players like this in town. So let me say the facts. St. Bart's Buffaloes has been a football program since 1971. The lack of communication from the administration and the football area here to St. Bart's about adding a year, another year program is ridiculously bad, and it goes from the top. I am the biggest Victor Valeski supporter in the town, without a doubt, but here he's dropped the ball. No pun intended there. There was no communication from any of your coaches, your athletic director, or yourself, or Mr. Figaroa, that your idea of going to seventh grade football to add to eighth grade. We are not, and have, I personally do not think you need to have an eighth grade football team in town, but we have supported it throughout the years at St. Bart's. With my little joke before about equipping the kids with the new uniforms, St. Bart's has equipped numerous kids on your eighth grade team the last four or five years with equipment with shoulder pads, rib pads, and last year with helmets. If you can't have enough helmets and equipment for an eighth grade team, how are you adding kids onto that? Congratulations today on your interest meeting, we had about over 50 kids come. I've had 300 kids come to football clinics. They're all not going to sign up and play. Okay? Let's be honest, they're not. Okay? Let's go back to communication. None. So we have, over the years, put, seven or eight years ago, football was down in this community, without a doubt. We've built it back up at St. Bart's.
10 seconds.
Wow, that's not enough time there, Bernie. Let it go. And you, right now, are threatening our U-11 team, our U-12 team, or U-4 team. We will cease to exist as a feeder program based on what you are doing here.
Time.
Making parents choose where to go and afraid of it.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to the board?
Good evening. Board President, members of the board, David Lonsky, 15 Kentisbury Circle. I echo a lot of what you just heard from, from Mr. Seeler. I'm on the board of St. Bart's, I participated in St. Bart's, been involved with that program for 50 years. I'm also President of East Brunswick Coalition of Athletic Organizations, and also President of the RPAB, as many of you have served with me on that, on that board. I take very seriously the athletic programs, especially the youth athletic programs in our community, and I think that when there is an action or consideration by this board that's going to jeopardize one of the organizations, that there must be communication and outreach to that organization to make sure that what's going on is for the betterment of our entire community. Frankly, as I sit here today and I ask myself, well, are they going to have a fifth and sixth grade football team? Why not do a K through four? What are, what are we doing here? Why are we in a position where we're competing with one another? There are other sports such as baseball, basketball, where a child could participate in both the rec programs and the athletic programs at high school. That is not the case with football. You can't go through contact drills for two hours after school, go home and eat dinner and do it again for another two hours that evening. It just doesn't work. You have to make a decision to play for one or the other, and this decision will impact the Buffaloes, and it will impact our ability to sustain ourselves. And I'm just going to throw one other thing, and I know Chad, I'm also the treasurer of the Buffaloes. We spend about $140,000 a year to equip our kids, to make sure they're playing in a safe environment, to make sure that there are trainers on the sidelines for every game, and everything else that goes into running that successful program, not just on the football side, but also on the cheer side. And I ask you to consider really where you're going with this and what it's really going to cost. If there's busing costs, as we heard this evening, that's going to run $2,000 to bring athletes, athletes to games. I don't know what the schedule involves. I know that there was only three or four games that the eighth grade team was able to participate in, because frankly, a lot of other districts are no longer supporting an eighth grade team. I ask you just to consider whether or not you're going to go down that slippery slope of starting to challenge and go against a lot of these organizations and sports groups in town. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the... Did you speak yet? No, you spoke it. Oh. Yes, come on. Sorry. You spoke at the other way, yes. You're, you're allowed your, your additional three minutes, yes. Sorry about that, Alex.
No arm, no foul.
Yes. Welcome back.
Alex Bealman, Six Douglas. I, the, the theme I've been talking about for the last few meetings, which was about the curriculum and how it's going to be changing next year. I'm just going to be just reading a letter that was sent by four members of the New Jersey Board of Education to the board, the, the whole Board of Education of New Jersey that just met yesterday, and I'm just going to read, it was meant to Angela Allen McMillan, who is a D, ED, EDD, Acting Commissioner appointed by the governor, and it wrote, reads as follows. Dear Commissioner, as you, as you know, there have been tremendous pushback from the parents of New Jersey school children to soon be implemented 2020's New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Comprehensive Health and Physical Education, commonly known as Sex Ed Standards. On April 13th, the governor asked the Department of Education to review the standards and provide further clarification on what age-appropriate guidelines look like for our students. Following day, on April 14th, the department provided a memo of clarification. While this is good start, we believe a more robust review is warranted. As board members, we continue to hear views of parents and educators with a passionate feeling about what is appropriate and inappropriate for their children to learn about, especially sex. This conversation has merit, as it provides the opportunity to act in the best interest to children of New Jersey. Furthermore, as troubled by your counseling of parents that have issues about the standards to opt out, we believe it should be the right of parents to opt out. We are troubled that so many find the standards as written and to be included provisions that would prompt them to opt out, resulting in their children missing out so many of important and less controversial topics that would benefit their children. Below are the listed members of the New Jersey State Board of Education that are requesting that you voluntarily open a reexamination of the standards by conveying a committee of experts, educators, parents, and various stakeholders to review the 2014 and 2020 standards to examine some potential adjustments. Specifically, we are hoping the committee and department will recommend removing some of the more controversial and graphic language, as is examined, and the age appropriateness of the grade at which some of these topics are recommended to be thought. We will provide, we, we, while previous examination will include previous comment we did occur during COVID lockdown, we, we are, many of New Jersey parents were distracted and unable to participate in the review. We are requesting unrestricted and robust public statewide input and examination of whatever recommendations come to this committee. We believe standards should reflect in the will of the people of New Jersey, and while we are aware that some of districts have adapted
10 seconds.
the 2020 standards, but many have not, and request that they are given permission to continue to teach the 2014 standards and delay the implication of 2020 standards until this robust, robust inclusive standard
Time.
can be completed. Thank you for consideration.
Very good speed talking. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board? Dr. Zimbicki?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Randy Crozer, 169 Prigmore Street.
Excuse me, sir, could you please repeat your name? I didn't I didn't get it.
Randy Crozer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just going back to St. Bart's. I grew up in Milltown, don't hold against me now, but I came through St. Bart's, and I got to share the field with a lot of great people from East Brunswick. And the relationship that we built over the years, and fast forward now as the replacement to Chad Seeler as the football coordinator, the thing that stuck out to me about your new budget, nearly $18,000 for new uniforms alone. Last year at St. Bart's, we bought five-star vice football helmets for roughly 150 of our kids. And right there alone cost us $60,000 that we fundraised over the year. This year alone, we are looking to buy our cheerleaders brand-new uniforms that are going to cost $17,000, all said and done, for three different teams. To me, that just stands out as, why are we putting that money into just uniforms when there's so much more that every football player needs? Helmets, shoulder pads, rib pads, thigh, knee pads, let alone coaches? Last year, the East Brunswick Middle School team only had one coach, and they had a second one, but he was a no-show. My football teams from the 11, 12, and 14 U team averages six to eight volunteers who want to be out there with the kids. And they're doing it just because they want to be there. No money is involved. So to me, I just think that that money could be spent in other places where it'd be better served. You know, thank you for your time, and I just hope we do the right thing for these kids going forward in the long run.
Thank you, Randy. I know Dr. Zbicki. I think you're up.
Good evening. Dana Zbicki, President of the East Brunswick Education Association. So you all know me to be a straightforward, honest, collaborative person, and I have to tell you, between yesterday and today, I have been extremely frustrated. We have always, the Association, has always operated in good faith during negotiations and outside of negotiations, when labor relation issues needed to be discussed. I felt a bit blindsided last night. Apparently, at some point yesterday evening, information published on the Board of Education agenda, which contains specific details regarding next year's schedule, was visible. Certain pieces of this are matters covered by the EBA contract and our labor relation issues. Once I became aware, I notified Central Administration, and the details were evidently removed from the agenda. As you can imagine, there are thousands of side conversations going on right now with EBA members, and not one of them, I am confident, is accurate. That's a complete unnecessary problem for myself, the Association, and now I must expel extraordinary energy just to correct this. So on April 26th, myself, some members of my team, administration, met to discuss the issues of restructuring and early start time. We were told that this was a high priority for the district. We agreed to make sure that the Executive Committee of EBA was available to meet two days later after that, to receive a proposal from administration. That same day, April 28th, I sent additional questions to the administration on this issue. I did not receive an answer. Same went for the 29th, May 2nd, May 3rd. Finally, on Wednesday, I received what I was looking for. However, it was in complete contradiction to what I was originally given. This has just been really confusing. So I just want to make sure that, although I have some things now, and I'm not sure everything is accurate at this point, nothing has been finalized or agreed upon, which is why I'm disappointed that the details would be made public without such an agreement. We have always operated in good faith. So I'm upset, because as the President of the Association, it should be my responsibility to provide information to my members and not have it go out in other ways, which is a bad look. It's a bad look for me, it's a bad look for you, it's a bad look all the way around. And this can never happen again. I consider it a breach of confidentiality, and, you know, it's something that was considered a high priority. I have been working endless, and this has been going on since December, to be quite honest. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zbicki. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the Board this evening?
Good evening. Ryan Siampa, 13 Nelson Circle.
Could you repeat your name, please?
Ryan Siampa.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to make this short and sweet. This is coming from a father of two, somebody I am on the Board for St. Bart's Buffaloes. This is something that I feel, coming from the kids' aspect. You were implementing adding on a seventh grade football team. This is going to impact our younger children. You're asking the younger children to make a decision that play from kindergarten up, and then when they get to that decision to either play for seventh and eighth grade or continue through St. Bart's Buffalos. That's a very tough decision for them to make. If they don't make that right decision, they may feel like they're going to be left on the sideline and not able to play and not be involved. And that's not a decision that you really want these children to make. Again, they're children. They shouldn't have to make that decision. And if you do realize that, again, they're children, they may not be old enough, wise enough, to make that decision the right way, and it may put a lot of pressure on them that when we talk about mental health with the children, that's not good mental health for these children to make that decision. They come up with this organization, and we promote this organization to be a family. We call it Buffalo Family, which we are all Buffalo Family. And for them to have to make that decision to leave their family, because they feel if they become a high school football player, they may not get the same opportunity as someone that started in the seventh and eighth grade program. I think that's very unfair. I think it's extremely unfair. Again, for any of you who have ever been to our organization, have been on the sidelines and watched the games, and had a child in the organization, you understand that these children make a bond. They create a bond with their teammates and their coaches. And that's something that I would feel like you're tearing them apart from a family that you helped build, because they feel like they may not be able to get the same chance as somebody else that made that decision to go to a different organization or a different league. I think it's very, I think it's unfair. I think it's wrong. And I think the fact that we're doing it so well, that we have such a turnout every single year, and a comeback turnout every single year, I think it's very, very unfair to these children. I just think, I hope you reconsider it. I hope it's something that what we spoke about, that rings in your ear, and you think about that, everything we say. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the Board this evening? Is he doing it? No? Okay, then I will then close the public portion. Before I ask for a motion to move tonight's agenda, are there any items that need separating out?
Mrs. Lacks, if I may. Just the first item under Board of Education Minutes. That, we did not, I sent a note to the Board, we did not get those completed, so there'll be no action on that one.
Okay, so, okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion, with the exception of the Board of Education item, for a motion for this evening's agenda. Moved by Mr. Corangelo. Is there a second? Oh, second by Mrs. Reese. Okay. And is there any discussion on any of the items on the evening's agenda? Yes. Mr. Winston.
President Lacks, I know we've gotten into a habit of passing the whole agenda. I just want to put out, at this point, that I think is a disservice to the public, as we pass it all, there's so much great information in here, that we used to do it by section, such as community programs, curriculum and instruction, and just to pass it at large, I'm not sure what the rush is, but I do think that it was best taken in sections in the past.
Thank you for your comments. So to answer that question, the reason sometimes we'll move the entire agenda is in evening like tonight, when you have a very large program, we can do that. Now, one thing you need to know, and so does the public, anytime we move the agenda, two things. One is I ask if anything needs separating out, and the other thing is that the agenda, any item on the agenda is open for discussion. So you do not lose any time or ability, nor does any other Board member, to discuss any of the items on the agenda this evening.
No, I do understand, and you're right about tonight, but we've done this actually for the last five meetings. So I don't necessarily believe it's time that's causing this. I'm just simply stating that I think it serves our stakeholders a bit better when we can go through and explain some of the things that are happening with their tax dollars and with the district and with other things than just passing the agenda and going home. It is just my opinion, and of course, we're open to the vote.
Thank you. No, I appreciate the comments. That's what will be taken. Is there any other? Mrs. Reese.
For the transportation services. Thank you. So could we make a motion to approve the two-tier busing with implementation contingent upon an agreement with the EBA? Would that be the proper wording? I'm not a, you know, a lawyer.
No.
Is it a motion to amend that, or is it something?
Matt's looking at it.
You may know the word then.
I didn't hear.
She wants to know if the motion would need to be amended contingent upon an agreement with the EBA.
No, I don't believe it would have to be amended. At the end of the day, we have a duty to, if we're going to have a change in length of day or student contact time, we would have to negotiate that. So I think what you can do is note that the negotiations will continue, but if the negotiations are not fruitful, we'll have to comply with the current length of day and contact time, teacher contact time with the students. So there is a way of changing the schedules. We're trying to optimize it and working with EBA on that. So I don't think you're going to need to make this contingent on it. We still have a duty to do it, but at the end of the day, if we can't come to an agreement, the schedules that are made up by your academic team, they'll have to comply with what the current length of day is for teachers in terms of teaching time.
Yes. Mr. Winston.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mrs. Reese, were you finished?
I'm a little confused. So maybe could you explain it again? So you're saying it's not necessary because...
I don't think it's necessary. So let me just explain. Let's just hypothetically say that the student contact time under, for argument's sake, is five hours, okay? And underneath, under this schedule, it's five hours and 15 minutes. We would have to negotiate that additional 15 minutes of student contact time. If we can't negotiate it, we have to create student schedules within this to have five hours of contact time. So, and what we were talking about, like, for example, there's a lot of, and I'm not a scheduling expert, so I don't want, ask me scheduling questions, but as Dr. Valeski said, I think it was Mr. Winston had asked it earlier, about the 20 minutes beginning of the day to make sure there's enough buffer so kids can get off the buses and into school and then depart schools. All that has to be taken into consideration, and that's what we're working with EBA on. But at the end of the day, if we don't come to an agreement, if you guys go with these start times, we will have to conform the schedules, the student schedules, to adhere to the terms of the EBA agreement. Interestingly, the EBA agreement has, it doesn't have a start time and an end time. It doesn't have that. It doesn't even have the amount of student contact time in the contract. It's timeless to that. But we know what the student contact time is at the high schools, the middle, or the upper Churchill, the elementary schools, and it's based on practice. What is the practice and what we've done over the years? So that's what we're talking about. The schedules that I've seen so far, the actual student contact time at many of the schools is actually being reduced. So that's what we're working on with them. And there's, and I can't answer all the questions, but I know that there's intricacies about certain special subjects, things that the, you know, because you're combining different classes and things, that's what we're working on with the EBA.
No, I know. I'm not looking to get into the weeds. I was just saying, you know, if we had added that line so that it would, you know...
I mean, I think what, Ms. Reese and Mr. Winston, I think that once the Board approves this, and you go out for, you put out bids, and you get bids for busing, if we can't come to an agreement...
It's going to fall apart.
It's not going to fall apart. You're just going to have to create schedules that satisfy EBA without negotiations and work for educating the kids.
Out of courtesy, I thought to add it. All right, thank you.
Could you clarify for us the 20-minute differential on the elementary, actually not for us, for the public, the fact that the elementary day is 20 minutes longer on paper versus the teaching time?
You mean in the proposed?
In the proposed.
Right. So there's additional time built into the day. We have to, we want to align the schedules of the buses. So primarily, this is about getting the bus to the elementary schools, upper NK4 or pre-K4 buses. So we are elongating the day at the beginning and at the end, and building in additional time that is non-instructional within the day, but not increasing teaching time. So it's designed to be consistent throughout the elementary configurations, whether it's pre-K to 4 or upper elementary 5, 6.
Yep. Thank you. I just wanted that to be clear. Do we have additional questions? Mr. Winston.
So I appreciate your answer to, Ms. Reese, and I do understand that, and I think that only goes forward to fortify my points from before. And I do know that we are involved in negotiations, and I do know that because the President of the EBA told me tonight that these are still negotiations. So with that, I would like to offer a motion to table. I do believe that we should do it in one piece. Matt, Mr. Giacobi's answer that, well, we have to go back and change some things if it doesn't go, makes me very uncomfortable in adding distance to the playing field here. So with that said, I would like to offer a motion that this gets tabled for one week so we can get some satisfaction on the negotiations and have a better understanding whether this is going to be possible and practical.
Are you asking for just that portion to be tabled, then? You're making a motion to table...
Just that one item. Yeah, it would be Transportation Services, item one.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Wow. Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, we're going to go and move on to our new and our old business, our committee reports, information items.
We have to vote.
Oh, God, I'm sorry. See? I'm a little seen out tonight. Okay. I'm going to ask the Secretaries to please call the roll this evening.
Okay. On the agenda excluding the minutes, Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes, except for Transportation Services, number one, I vote no.
Noted. And Mrs. Lacks.
Yes. Okay, the motion carries. Now, I apologize, we'll move on to our new and our old business, our committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the Board. And I just want to start out, because I know that Nora spoke about Decision Day, but we actually have two parents up here that had seniors committing to Decision Day, and I'm going to start with the one that Ms. Nora may be most interested to hear about. If you would like to share where your child has committed?
Rutgers.
So we have two Rutgers. And Mr. Winston also has a graduating senior.
University of Rhode Island.
Hey, very good. Very nice. And you're in the Curriculum Committee meeting, notes are here. Lee, would you want to speak about that?
That was our last Curriculum Committee meeting of this school year. The only thing I want to say is thank you, Dr. Bowley, and your team. You guys keep working very hard, keep adding good classes to our curriculum, and keep improving the teaching skills, keep providing new teaching tools, keep updating... You guys keep working very hard, keep adding good classes to our curriculum, and keep improving the teaching skills, keep providing new teaching tools, keep updating the textbooks. Thank you very much, and it's really great pleasure working with you and your team. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I think, I don't think we can say it enough, Mr. Juliana, how impressive it is what you have done with this budget and coming in the way we are with the .7. So you and your team, for all of you, congratulations.
Well, I'd like to just say thank you to the Board for the work through the committee process. I think that that work is extremely important to getting us to the point where we are, and then, and also to the entire Board for their support and work and thoughtful questions through the process.
It's a true team effort, as evidenced by the shared services with the town. I think the mayor was here tonight, so we are a good partnership. That's wonderful. Do we have any other Board members? Look at that quiet Board. Okay. Well, I know you can't see it, it's a very formal, but you know, it's such a nice night, and to have the staff, especially since it's been three years in the making, and for them to have their families there, you know, it's the small sacrifices the Board is willing to make. So we do have a need for closed session, whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. The items listed on this evening's agenda, the length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action may be taken. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So close.
For closed session? It's Mr. Hong and Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Congratulations to all of our awardees. Congratulations to our longest-serving employees of 25 years plus, and thank you to those members of the public that came out this evening to speak to us.